Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Undeclared City Council Meeting. It's Tuesday, April 12th. It's 6:30 in the evening. Isn't it nice to have the sun shining upon us now that it's stopped raining? Let the record show, the councilors are here except for Kathy Martin-Willis, who called, let me know she's got the flu, and we are hoping that she gets better soon. We have minutes from the meeting of March 13th. Do they meet with your official O-K-P-D-O-P?
My move to approve the minutes of March 13th as received.
Motion second on February 6th. If I may say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. We're gonna have a couple of presentations here under visitor comment. Let's start with the Polk County Fire District. Chief Ben Strange. Good evening, chief. Glad to have you with us this evening.
Thank you. Thanks, mayor and councilors. I'm here to give you some information. When you get your ballot in the mail in a couple of weeks, you're gonna see Measure 27-128 on it. It's a renewal of a five-year local option levy for emergency service operations. Fire District Board of Directors decided to put this on the ballot, and I'm here to talk to you informationally, to tell you what it's all about. Can't speak in support or opposition to this, but I do wanna make sure that you kinda know what it's all about. So currently, the Fire District collects a 19 cent per thousand operating levy. This next fiscal year, we will continue to collect that. This levy would go into effect after that one concludes. It would continue at the same rate of 19 cents per thousand. So if it fails, obviously, that tax wouldn't be levied. If it passes, the tax will continue at the current rate. The impacts of this, I'll talk quickly about what impacts will be if it fails and what they will be if it passes, and also brought some letters for each one of you as well as anybody listening, so they don't have to take notes. If it fails, there are two primary things that will happen. The first is we'll have to reduce some staffing. We will not lay anybody off, but during certain hours of the day when people are sick or on vacation, we won't be able to fill all of those hours through overtime or temporary staffing like we currently do. The second impact will be that we won't be able to completely fund the Fire District's equipment replacement plan. These are the big-ticket items, our air packs, radios, some of our vehicles, cardiac monitors, things that cost us a lot of money that we have to save up for year after year. I think the third thing will just be kinda disperse throughout the budget, some training things. I'm sure you've dealt with that with the city as far as kinda just having to cut here and there. So that's the impact of it fails. The main things are not being able to backfill some of those positions and not funding the equipment replacement plan. If it passes, there are three things that we will do. The first would be to fully fund the standards, the minimum standards of the equipment replacement plan. The second thing that we'll be doing would be to hire one more full-time firefighter paramedic. I'm gonna explain this if it gets a little into the weeds. I assure you, it's on this letter, it'll make more sense. Currently, we have two daytime firefighter paramedics, and so we have more staffing during the day than we do at night. If we hire one more full-time employee, we can actually move those day timers at their same pay to 24-hour shifts because of the way our contract works with the union. So as a result of hiring one more, we end up with 84 more hours per week of having four firefighter paramedics on duty. So that's the second thing. And the third thing is that we would hire a part-time fire marshal. The Fire District had a part, uh, full-time fire marshal up until 2012. A position was laid off due to budget constraints. This would allow us to hire a part-time fire marshal. So those are the three things that would happen if it passes. That's my very down and dirty what it's all about. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions from council? You have the information in your packet tonight, and I thought it was pretty complete. Additional questions?
I think I have a question.
Can you comment on the manpower versus population growth, you know, the past five, 10 years? Where we were back then and where we are now, and then where we're going?
We have added some staff in the past five years. We've hired one additional person in that timeframe since 2014, I believe. In that timeframe, our pollings increased by 42 percent. So it's been pretty significant, and we've been able to add some manpower, but obviously with the population growth, that is a concern of ours. I'd also recommend, if you haven't been to the Fire District's webpage, read on it. There is a link on there that says "Documents," and it takes you to several Fire District's documents. One of them is called "The Standard Cover," and some of the things that that does is identify our overlapping calls, when we were and weren't able to meet our minimum standards of what we went on seeing in that time.
There's some questions.
Could you articulate a little bit the importance of having a fire marshal?
Yeah. I'm Mr. Jeff Kennings here. The Fire District is responsible for evaluating access and water supply. And even though a fire marshal works for a Fire District, typically, the educational paths of firefighters and fire marshals, say maybe one or two classes, are very different. Fire marshals are really into fire code. They're actually the state fire marshals around the Oregon State Police, and so codes and code enforcement. So it's, there's quite a difference in education. What we've done in the past several years is we've gotten a lot of our firefighters certified to do some basic inspections to be able to do our businesses, our mercantiles, and some assembly spaces which are places that have a limited amount of people. The state helps us out with educational facilities. They help us out with healthcare. Some of the other difficult facilities, some of our target hazards like manufacturing, large multifamily dwelling things, those are things that we don't have quite as much expertise in as we need. And the fire marshal will help with that as well as following up, even with those basic inspections with business owners who aren't really willing to comply or don't think that they need to. It gives more consistency and enforcement of those.
There's some questions.
One more question. Who have you been using or what service have you been using for fire marshal up till now?
I've been spending a lot of my time getting educated and doing my best to keep up, especially with new construction. I've gotten to know a lot of people in the city of Independence in the last year. And we've been relying heavily on our deputy state fire marshal, we'll go ahead and name her Shannon Biller. Shannon's been phenomenal to work with. She comes by, she helps us out with Marquee, with all these other target hazards. She is responsible for all of Yanhill, all of Polk, and all of Lincoln County. And she's also responsible, she takes care of Westmore and University, all the schools. She does a phenomenal job, but obviously, that's a heavy load.
Thank you.
There's some questions.
How else can we promote this so that everybody cares about it?
I think, I'm gonna take the opportunity here since the chief is here as a public employee. He can't really advocate or anything like that or suggest how we can do that, but as a council member and as a person, letting people know, letters to the editor, talking to your neighbors and friends, and letting them know that this is on the ballot is, it's an election. And so I think that would, that probably would be helpful to do that. And excuse me for taking your-
Well, I appreciate the question, and nonpartisan, I would say that is a difficult, that's been a challenge for me because, you know, it's hard. I'm sure you all know, you sit here in the chamber, just like our board sits in our room, and you all talk about an issue for a year, and it seems like everybody should know, and then you go out and it seems like nobody knows about it, and you're going, "This is not new." So I sort of miss that.
There are no questions. Chief, thank you very much. I know you have another engagement, and so I really appreciate you taking the time to come and visit with us.
Thank you.
Really appreciate how you're getting around the community. I've noticed it in others too, and it's very much appreciated.
Appreciate that. Thank you all.
Our next presentation is Polk County Sheriff Mark Gadsen. Good evening, sheriff. Welcome.
Well, thank you. I just wanted to take just a few minutes and kinda recap some of the things that we've been doing at the sheriff's office that is solely a result of public safety levy in the past, in 2015. And so part of my job is really trying to show what we do, is letting people know and understand what we do. And so this is something just to grace the service of that. I don't know how, is that just go-
And we all, we do all have, we all have it in our pocket here.
So I'll just go to page three. Really what we've really focused on in the last year and a half is public engagement. We had really done prior to that, and whether that's going to city council meetings, every watch group meetings, doing training in the schools with parents and kids, and doing threat assessments and victim impact panels, and really anything that is asked of us, we try to accommodate. I rarely turn anybody away for, if they're coming to ask for help, for whatever it may be. We have the ability to do that, and it's our job to do that. This way, I'm against, we're supposed to serve, and if I don't do that, then I'm failing. So we really have focused on that. It's not just me going out and doing these, it's a lot of deputies go out too, and I trust in them to go out and do the right thing. Some of them didn't necessarily, they didn't have experience doing it, now they do, and they really enjoy it, because it is really about public service. Within the sheriff's office, we have two divisions, the Corrections Division and Patrol Division. Within the Corrections Division, we have, our jail's 195-bed facility. It's really capable of 204 if we add a few more beds, but we have 195 beds. We typically run, last year was about 138 per day average inmates. And so compared from 2016 to now, our bookings are just up over 3 percent compared to last year. It's about 3,000 people that have come in through the jail. The next page talks about the different agencies and how many they brought to the facility, because every agency, including state police, grand, tribal police, everybody brings their custodies, their inmates to our jail, and then they drop off, and now it's our responsibility to take care medically, get them to court, do everything that is our job, and that's required to do. And so sometimes, people assume that either we get paid by the cities, and they drop off a inmate, which doesn't happen. It all falls on us, and the numbers really do show, they're kinda all over the board in terms of number of arrests, but for instance, my office, we were at 719 last year. That's up 66 percent from the previous year. So in 2015, it's at the stage that we were doing 10 hours a day coverage. We were handling 24 hours worth of calls in that 10-hour window, so we were in no way, shape, or form of doing any kind of proactive enforcement. It was all reactive. And so 2016, beginning of that, we went to 20 hours a day, and then halfway through 2016, we went to 24 hours a day. Right now, we're full staff. In 2016, we were probably short three or four people throughout the year, and so the numbers I expect to go up, or I expected them to be up, and which they are, but we were able to really be proactive in some of the things that we do instead of being reactionary. I'll talk about some of those things in a minute. Our average daily population in jail, like I said, is 138, it was actually 132. The average length of stay for an inmate is 19 days. That's typically what we see. Out of that 132, probably 115 or so are the 19-day or less folks. The other ones are sentenced, probably up to a year, six months to a year typically. So our turnover is pretty quick. That kinda limits us, our ability in terms of doing programs and other things like that, because the state is a little short, we're not able to really delve into a lot of things. But some of the things we have done is bringing mental health, we have a mental health provider in our jail. Five days a week, we also have addiction services, alcohol-related person that works in there full-time as well. So they interact with inmates every day. Whatever kind of counseling they need, they provide it. We didn't have that before, and so that started in 2016, middle of 2016. Our female population has been going up over the last few years, and this year is no different. Two years ago, we were probably 15, but on average, the population now we're 33. And so that's a significant increase, and I don't have, I don't have a reason for that. It's just this way, not, it's not the start of it, but it's across the state, it was like that to other jails. In our patrol division, kinda broke down on the next page, the things that we do. Some of them are state mandated, some of them are out of necessity. Court security, jail functions, amateur radio services, ham radio operators, civil process, restraining orders, subpoenas, any kind of court documents. Those are all things that are required by the state to do and provide. So we have a couple of folks that really just handle those things. We also have a concealed handgun license person, that's all she does at the time, and we have enough work in that role for her to stay busy. That's something else I'm mandated to do. Right now, we have 14 patrol deputies, four sergeants on patrol. So the sergeants are working sergeants, they're not sitting behind a desk or anything like that, they're out working with them. So we have 18 voters on patrol. Comparatively, in 2015, we had six. So that's where, that's six people, that's what we had, and now we have 15. So we really have changed that, and that's because of the levy. So in our patrol division, we have 120 volunteers throughout all of our different programs. In our jail, we have 75, and those are separate volunteers that come into the jail. So we have nearly 200 volunteers that we manage, and it's hard. Anybody that has volunteer programs knows, it's difficult to manage volunteer employees, there really is. And so we have 200 of those. I think it means a lot to me, because volunteers, if we didn't have some of them, we would not really be able to do some of the things we're able to do. And so I'm glad that we have that many volunteers that wanna come and help. That number's increased probably by about 40 or so over the last year and a half, so we're up a lot. Our patrol statistics, in 2017, we had $24,000 per service incidents versus the previous year was right at $20,000. That's a lot of calls for service. Some of them were minor, some of them were pretty serious, and everywhere in between. So out of those, we agreed, 875 arrests out of those 24,000 calls for service. Eight thousand of those, 91 calls. So those are calls that we have no discretionary number, those just come in regardless, and that's up by about 1,000 from the previous year. I always get a question asked of me, you know, when we stop somebody, "What's our quota?" And that can ask, we don't have a quota, never have, never will. That's not something that I believe in. Sometimes, there's a right time to issue citations, sometimes, there's a right time for education. And so if you look at our numbers, about a third of the people that we stop, 6100 people ever stop, about a third of them receive a citation. So it's not, that's a good number, that's just worded and edited. But, you know, we did 2,000 more or so, 1,500 more traffic stops in the previous year. So we're out really being proactive, finding things before they happen. You can't always prove that, but on the next page, we talk about some of the statistics and crimes that have gone down versus crimes that have gone up. It is because we are being proactive. So this is, so this is for the sheriff's office outside of the city limits. I don't know the stats for inside of the state limits, but so this is for outside. Everything is up for us. Thugs and drug, these are all drug-related in my mind. They have some drug-related nexus. Overall, crimes are up, you know, 64 percent from 2015, and a lot of those were self-generated, going out and finding things, not, they're not the things that we're just responding to, 911 call or something like that. You know, thefts are up, DUIs are up. I always get asked the whole marijuana component, you know, is there an increase in DUIs? And yes, there is. There've always been DUIs out there, we're just finding it, because we're out being proactive. The DUIs with the marijuana component, you know, in 2015, there was eight, this year, or last year, there was 50. So that is a significant increase in my book, that we're able to find them. I believe that they've always been there, to some extent, and just were able to actually capture this time. So, but you see all the other numbers, they're, they're all up across the board. Another function that we have, this is a grant-funded position through the state for a global crisis response team. And what this does, I think I've come here and talked about it before, but it consists of two teams. Each team has a police officer, a mental health professional with them. Pickar, they respond to calls when they happen, start providing services right then versus, "Hey, go check-ins, go to a home on Monday and, you know, make an appointment." We start delivering services when that person is in crisis, and that is something that is proven to be more effective versus, you know, "Hey, a week, go check in with somebody." And they're not, in a week, they're not in crisis anymore, or it might not be, they may not go get services. But when we deliver services right then, it is much more effective. The two teams, we have a team, one deputy, mental health professional, and then the sales department, as the other police officer. They only do West Salem, so primarily, both teams, we work seven days a week, we work 24 hours a day, but we have seven days a week. And Salem police officers, they're in Independence, they're in Falls City, Dallas, whatever, if we're not on. If they're not on, we'll go to the city of West Salem and handle calls if there are their calls, they're on. Last year, we handled 504 calls altogether, and it breaks it down by city, so you can see where Independence fits on that. It has, actually has the most calls for service for this team. And these are things that the Independence Police respond to, realize there's some kind of mental health component or nexus to it, they'll call our team, they'll come and then just start, start taking care of it. Prior to this team being here, it was about 30 percent or so of any kind of call that we responded to had a mental health-related component. We either took it to jail, because that was the option back seven years ago, or to the hospital, or leave it be and just do nothing. About 30 percent of those ended up in jail. That's just how it worked. Last year, 8 percent of the calls went to jail. So that's a significant decrease, and I think, well, it is directly related to this team and their abilities to provide the services and divert people that don't need to be in jail. Sometimes, they don't need to. They may have committed a crime, but do they really need to be there based on their mental health? And so that's a big reduction in my book. 30 percent of those 504 calls ended up in a mental health facility. That's either a hospital, or there's, it's called PCC, it's over in the single, that's another place where we can take folks in a crisis, so immediately. So they're all, this is a great program, it really is. We are now the pioneers of this program. Marion County started this program several, several years ago, and so it's easy to copy what they were doing, make it ours. And so we're on the third year of the grant, and so we've repeatedly been approved for it based on our stats and just our overall responses to calls, so otherwise, they wouldn't find our position. All of this, yeah, crime is up, you know, more people are going to jail, but it is because of the public safety levy. It's still leveling off, and it makes it look kind of, it makes it look really bad because we had no people in 2015, but now we do. And so there is, you know, obviously, it's gonna be an increase because we have more people. I expect those things to level off. But the bottom line is the people that we serve, we wouldn't be able to serve them without the help of the levy. And so it's a five-year operating levy. Whether in 2015, the city councils, including here, all supported in favor of it, which were crucial of all. And then it's five years old, expires 2020. We expect to go out for another levy at some point prior to that, so we'll come back and talk on that, on this reality. I will say though, the public safety levy was for 45 cents per thousand. So we have yet to levy that full amount. It, it's not, so apologies. So in, the highest we've done is 37 cents per thousand. We haven't used the full amount this coming year, it's getting here at 32 cents or so. So we're not using every available piece of money, because there, at the time, I don't wanna use it just to use it. It's not, it's not what I do, who I am, so it's always been lower. I think that really speaks all against to, to the ability of, for us to deliver the service that we promised and what people expect of us, so. That's really all I have. I just wanted to share stuff so people understand what we do, how much we do, and we are here. We help, Independence, Independence helps us all the time on calls for service, so it is a partnership that we couldn't do it by ourselves, and it is a joint effort, it really is.
Questions for sheriff? I just wanna take a moment and say thank you for taking the time to come in. I also wanna publicly thank you, you know, we gather once a month for the mayors, managers, commissioners, and yourself.
Sure.
Getting together at 7:00 AM when it's dark, cold, and awful, and I really appreciate your, and your engagement on a different, number of different levels. It really does make a difference, so thank you very much for what you're doing.
Appreciate it.
And thanks for coming to see me.
Thank you.
All right. I don't see anybody else jumping up for public comment tonight, so I'm gonna continue moving under mayor report. Just wanna remind council members that our next meeting is going to be on the fourth Tuesday. It'll be at 8:30 a.m. at Central High School. This is our Central High School annual meeting, and the question that the invited testimony for high school seniors will be responding to, "What is your vision for the future where our community, and how do you see yourselves making it happen?" So please allocate a couple of hours, and we'll have interesting informational presentations. For those who haven't been there, it's a, there'll be about 200 students there. It's one of the, this will be our 14th year.
Are we inviting any other dignitaries or people of importance to show up besides us, of course?
The students are there. Actually, Paul Evans is going to give us a legislative report, and so he'll, he'll be there at that time.
Are we sending out an invite though to like our senators and representatives?
We, that's how we advise for Evans to be able to attend our, I contacted him. Okay, Mr. City Manager.
I think it's to you. Thank you, mayor. Counselors, evening. A few different things, so I'll start off on a personal note. I will be out tomorrow, the next day, and Friday. I shared my mother's story with you last year, I won't do that again, but tomorrow or Thursday, she turns 100. And so I'm gonna make that journey down to the Bay Area and help her celebrate that. Let's see, apologies in advance, I have a few pages. We haven't been in a month, so I have a few things to update you on, and of course, you get our reports as well in your, in your notes, so I'll try not to be derelict or repetitive. First off, I, we've talked for a while about doing the visioning 2040 plan. We are in the process of being invited to apply to the University of Oregon through their Sustainable Cities program, and we are looking to match the cost of that, which is not as insignificant. We have some grant funds that we'll be seeking as well, so we're hopeful to be able to do that. Otherwise, we budgeted separately to engage that item next year, but we think we can get a lot more bang for the buck by going through their program. We'll get a lot of different resources applied to the area if we, and again, we've been applied, we've been invited to apply, so that's always been, it's just a question of whether we can pull together the matching resources to make this work. On a down note, and something you may be familiar with, as you know, we have been, we sold the mechanical building to Matthew, Mr. Matthew Lind and his LLC. He has fallen behind three years on property tax payments on that. We have advised him, according to your last motion on this, that we will be proceeding in foreclosure, i.e. that we gave him until this Monday to get even with the, with the tax burden, and he has not done so. So our attorney has already sent in notice, so we will be taking next steps. He has his payout of the final 80 or so thousands due to the city on that note scheduled for September, but we're moving on this, that may accelerate all that debt as well, so. He knows, you're, you know, of course, we've been serious about this capacity, we tend to be serious and be naive, and hopefully, he can do what he takes to, you know, make it current. So let's see, I'm just gonna kind of morph into this here a little bit, so the police department's been busy, they have a great coffee with a coffee event on Saturday, Saturday, it's last past Saturday, March 1st, excuse me, a couple Saturdays, the March 24th, and me and Cina, it was quite a tornado for that event, and then in Saturdays, a pretty heavy traffic over there anyway, so it was really a nice opportunity for them to engage the public. The police department is also beta-testing an electronic transmission of police reports to DA's office, trying to get up to, you know, make the technology to appeal on this and avoid some of the time and chase processing this information. They are hopeful that we'll be able to get a system formalized to roll out for the rest of the counties, so again, this is sort of Independence being that test lab for these types of activities and these technologies, so moving that forward. Many of you know that GAIN is trying to expand their facilities, we're working with them on their car location. Many of you, I gather, attended a fundraiser this past week, so we work for you, and they are, we have found ways to cut their costs, so we think we're gonna make it a lot more reasonable for them to move forward on the project. Feel free to dial it to me at any time, I'm just gonna breeze up through this, it's gonna be fast. Things are progressing well with the virtual situation room project, looking to incorporate pedestrian flow mapping, in other words, idea of checkpoints, et cetera, and downtown parking monitoring, so this is our partnership with an Italian firm, and we will be unveiling, we were trying to put together a, a virtual situation room, starting on the, in the space as our, which will be the launch of the effort. So should be kinda fun, you're definitely getting a lot of recognition for that effort. We received a grant with a rural opportunity initiative grant from Business Oregon, will be used to foster entrepreneurship and business development in the community, ties it nicely with our rural innovation capital status we met last month. So we will have, we'll be adding additional resources as a result of that grant to sort of bring all those efforts together, and so that's, Sean will be doing a little bit of more of an overview of this. And so, that's, Sean will be doing a little bit more of an overview of this at your next meeting at the high school. But I think we think we want to give them a good tech rollout of what we're doing. So, it'll be good for them, good for everybody to see a visual of what we're doing there. Also received a ten thousand dollar grant from the Ohio Metropolitan Visitor Association to create a permanent whole county tourism position, house the travel Salem. And this will be a collaboration between three cities in the county to add to our resources, those three sources to make that happen. So, we're trying to cement our place a little more strongly in the tourism industry, bolster and support our hotel, our new hotel, and our more active in downtown. So, just the more we do there, the more we can help each other and keep that moving along. This is a really interesting project. I, as always, we're getting interviewed on this, working with a couple of former intel anthropologists to help to study our success for the last twenty-plus years. So, the study is about how we got to where we are today, and we want to use as a learning tool for other communities, or they want to use as a learning tool for other communities, and springboard to funding the future projects we want to do. So, we, project should be wrapped up in June. It'll be a, I'm not quite sure what it'll look like at the end. It's a twenty-nine thousand dollar effort because we're being essentially the test site for this. We're going to get for five thousand dollars. So, it's, again, former intel employees, you have anthropologists that are doing this work. It should be a whole lot of fun telling, you know, being part of something that has the story for the last twenty years, along, you know, the long-known success of lots, lots of people to be interviewed for this. I don't know who's on that list. So, but a lot of names have come forward on that. Let's see, I just, I mentioned this last time, this Saturday, for those of you who knew Jen West, her celebration of life, she passed from cancer, her celebration of life will be at Mount Hunsell on Saturday at one PM, if you have an interest in newer. Talk about some of the development that's going on in Public Camp Private. So, independent station, nothing to report there. City Hall, we are expecting that announcement on that lease for the brewery will have been signed this week. We're hoping that announcement's coming tomorrow. I'll let you know when I know. I said information on it to you, but we think it is with the parallel forty-five, forty the parallel brewery. So, that, that was good. That's who we would hope will extend enough on that. Hotel, if you look out there, you can see that site work is well underway out there. They had a lot of it been mobilized this morning. We have a construction schedule. They will be very busy and probably just stay busy until they're done. And again, the expected opening is May of two thousand nineteen. A lot of dirtwork from time to date. On our public efforts, our work, Independence Landing Park, bids will be coming in shortly on that. Will be done, I believe, in May to make up an award. Downtown projects, you've probably noticed the construction, the traffic control out front here on, on Independence Highway, for our highway. What I'm working on first, they've been headed out very quickly. They actually shut up early and surprised us. So, we, we followed as quickly as we could, as those to the public of what's going on. So, we should have, we've been putting out some information on Facebook and Twitter and the like. So, that work will, well, our work should finish up by April thirty-one. That's going up D Street now. They're out of Mamba for the moment, and hopefully, it's going to get, we should by the end of the month on the work, of course, that they're going to come back in and do the parking lot and some other work as well. That was the page eleven back a month, about a month ago. So, they're moving fast. They told us that it's reasonable that they may be done by July fourth. We weren't expecting quite that a quick project. We're certainly happy for that, you know, given our last experience. Speaking of our last experience, we did settle on planning that we had with TT Construction. We ended up, they had to pay damages to the two to twenty thousand for their delays, and they're done, we're done, and they're, they didn't have work, but it just took them long, and it should have been, and it cost us a million time. So, they ended up paying a share of that bill. River View Park Concepts, open on the side of the park, the concept plant, whole back houses for that, the, the concept letter developing with Greenworks. Those will be April seventeenth at the library, and we will repeat with the second one at St. Patrick's on the twenty-second. So, market calendars, they're down to two very interesting options on, for River View Park this month's point. I think they were both really interesting and really, really great vision for the future of the park, not inexpensive. But, you know, we have some fundraisers to do in the future, but it's definitely a great vision, I think. Come take a look at those, again, the seventeenth and the twenty-second, seventeenth at the library, twenty-second at the church. Reader Board, we've accepted a little bit on that. That's ready to get in, that's ready to go. The electric is installed, and we're waiting for the Masons area to be assigned, and assigned the order, and decide the order on that. I think we've shared this meeting with you before. We are doing a stretch of walkway down Fur Park from F Street to G Street, as well as paving the parking lot there. We are starting to be advancing on that, and we should be letting that work here shortly. So, that's going to be a nice, real nice project, a consultant work that the master partners are doing an application. Which is a great project. Again, if you've ever been out to Inspiration Park and down Fur Park, we really need to do it. It's quite the treat. A heck of an effort by most of us. Reminder again, Independence cleanup day, Zany cleanup day, May nineteenth at the park. Let's see. We are, with respect to the request proposals for recruiters, that deadline is this Friday for responses, and we, the mayor, myself, and Sean Bay, we're all trying to narrow that to a three for council presentation. Probably even defer to the center meeting in May. We'll get back to you. We'd like to bring you a couple of firms to, you can interview with. They will, the people that we'll bring to you will clearly be qualified. It's just a question of they fit your, what you're looking for.
Those are RFPs for what?
Recruiters for the senior position.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Here's to it. Let's see. You've talked about the high school meeting on the twenty-third. You didn't mention, so we have also two market calendars we'd like to get together, May first, first special council meeting. More about that at the executive session, but May first, usual time. The fall of that will be executive session, however, there will be an open opportunity also to get a signature with President, an opportunity to sort of refresh on ethics. She'll do a twenty-minute ethics training, just as a refresher. It's a good time of year because two weeks later, your SCI forms due, in case you were, just as a reminder to you, your, your ethics forms. Karen, do they have any information?
Yes, it's, it's done through the state, and we should have all received notices from the state.
And it's on April fifteenth.
On April fifteenth, this month is due.
April fifteenth. April fifteenth, you won't be two weeks late, if that's what.
Same as tax day.
So, if anybody has any questions related to that, see Karen.
Please, it's here quickly. That deadline's next week.
Good, Mr. Manager.
It's actually next Sunday. So, it must be Monday's the actual deadline, probably the end of the day, all the taxes. And then, finally, for your calendar, and of yet another reminder, April twenty-fifth is your first budget made. So, we're putting a wrap on that document. So, hopefully, I'll be able to speak, and one of the next people will have all that book read and ready to get the presentations ready.
Questions for the manager?
Couple.
Please do.
We heard it suggested that we have a hotel cam mounted somewhere down by the hotel so people can watch the progress.
We actually have some conversations with Sean.
So, yeah, I did talk with our IT manager. He's got a camera currently doing time lapse. I think it sounded like we would be able to do maybe not full live stream video, but at least regular still shots.
Okay, that's a good idea. And what were the times of the meetings for the River View Park, open houses at the library and at St. Patrick's? Do you have that?
We don't have it completely set, but I would say probably four to seven at the library. And then, the church, it's going to be after mass, so, the donation.
Okay. And where is the reader board going to go?
In front of the library.
At where the park, where the clock is or someplace else, or do we know yet?
Yes. It's between, right, just past the light bulb on that corner of the building.
Okay.
Additional questions for the manager? Thank you for your complete report. Appreciate that.
And then, you, you want to cover the next item? I did. Lorraine is under the weather tonight, so if I could just, you have a report, well, actually, what you have is a copy of the award that she received. And I believe this is the third you're writing. So, this is, the award for compliance of financial reporting. If you look at the statistics, it tells you, it gives you an idea just how unique this is. And I think the statistics stood out the most to me. They're highlighted in yellow. That first one is highlighted. Of communities of our size, only one percent of the communities in the country have received this award. So, that's, that's pretty amazing. If you go down, in Oregon, we are one of seventeen percent, forty-two communities in the state, and that's pretty much larger communities than probably fairly large communities. And one of seventeen percent of forty-two that have received the award. And the statistics are very similar. So, you know, Lorraine does a heck of a job keeping us on task, keeping us, you know, some track you feel the whip. But she's done a wonderful job getting our financial situation, you know, in great order to deploy that we're now award commanders and leaders in the, you know, in this, this arena as well. So, we're pretty proud of what she's done for us, and we think that award speaks for itself.
So, on behalf of council, would you please let her know that we appreciate and cheer for her award? Well, not for her award, but the collective award, but leadership has appreciated and recognized, and I know a number of other cities don't have these kind of awards. And, yeah, it's a big deal. Please let her know.
I will. I'll tell her to watch YouTube.
Okay. Sleeping. All right. Moving forward, next item we have, we have some OLCC hearings. Sergeant?
I think it's you. Perfect. Thank you, Mayor. Counselors. In your packets, you should have two applications. I believe we're starting with the Valkyrie Wine Tavern. That's not accurate. I can switch.
You're going the right direction.
Perfect. So, Savannah Pierce has submitted an application to the OLCC to open a new establishment in the property of Yountown. There's been numerous things over the last several years. She's been putting in a lot of her own money and time to renovate that building in order to look at it as a new establishment. They're looking to, to have both beer, wine, as well as a few selected liquors and hard alcohol. They'll have a food service and they may provide some special events as well as, as they get some kind of feedback from the patrons. I'm not sure if you guys had any questions about that?
Let's just do, did people have questions about this particular application? They're going to be both serving, and they're also going to be selling containers.
They're going to have a retail section, but at this point, she doesn't have any plans for like growler filling in the station, but it's going to be beer and wine selections. They're going to be selling from the occasional store.
Do they have a proposed opening date?
You know, I don't know that yet. I think it's still under construction, and I haven't spoken to her specifically about that, but I'd be happy to try to find out and send you guys a message soon.
Okay.
Yeah.
Did you want to? Send, send you the applicant?
Hi.
Hi.
Nice meeting you.
Yeah, you too. Would you, you want to come up?
Sure.
That okay? Ask your questions and?
Good evening. Welcome to council. Rather than trying to go through the hoops of, if you're sitting in the back. So, when do you, when do you hope to open?
As soon as possible. I'm going to bring my plans in tomorrow and also submit them to the OJ, whole county tomorrow, and I have most of my bids, et cetera. And there's not actually a ton of buildup that needs to go down over there. So, yeah, just wait on those final approval things and permits, and the ball's rolling and hasn't been for some time, so.
So, chances are good you'll be open by the Fourth of July.
Yes, they're good.
Additional questions for the applicant? Do you have additional staff, any additional staff to work?
Council members, we have, we have an application, and would anybody like to suggest action? Please go ahead.
I move to recommend approval of the above liquor license requested upon payment of all fees.
Second. I have a motion, second discussion. Everybody okay with this? Good? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. And opposed, motion carries. Good luck, and we're looking forward to, to, to going inside of your operation.
Thank you.
Sergeant, to the next one?
The next one, Dollar General. They're currently still under construction as well. Over down on Monmouth Street, I think it's ten seventy-three. So, DG Retail LLC, which is a subsidiary, only a subsidiary of DG Promotions, which operates throughout the country as Dollar General stores their retail locations, kind of, they liken themselves to like a radiator, like high school pharmacy, things like that. And they are requesting an application for beer and wine sales, so retail sales at those locations. They currently operate sixteen locations within a hundred miles of our city, which is what I was able to find from their website. The one thing that I think you may have noticed, or if you didn't, for my analysis of this, all of the information was gathered either through public information, available through their website or other things, as well as some conversations that I had with an employee at another location. I had just received back the requested documentation yesterday from their legal representation for background and stuff and all the information. They did not reply to me in assembly fashion, and I made that very clear to them, but I hope that they, that wasn't how they're going to operate the business. However, I don't think that I found anything with any of my searches that would make me hesitant for that operation. I think it's just a, a large corporate entity, and I don't believe that they work at the speed that I work.
I appreciate that you chastised them.
Well, I chastise their attorney. For what it means to them.
Good luck. I have a question.
Yes.
Other Dollar Generals sell liquor in their other operations.
Correct. Yeah. And then, I was able to search police reports for the general area. I only located two reports related to anything alcohol for any of the locations within that hundred miles area, and they were people stealing alcohol from there. And another was a drug, a drug case where some dropped products, totally unrelated to the business. And they do have surveillance systems at the other locations. I decided to be able to see the one currently in operation, so.
Additional questions for Sergeant?
I was just curious, who filled out the application?
The attorney.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, this is kind of how they do it at the Tonya Ballpark. We'll have to teach them how to work at the speed of this evidence. Additional questions for staff? If someone would like to suggest action?
I move to recommend approval of the above liquor license requested upon payment of all fees.
Second.
Motion, second, discussion. Really appreciate it you let them know that we watch that kind of stuff. Yeah. Thank you very much. Additional comments from anybody? Okay. All in favor, simply focus saying aye. And opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. Do you have the next one, also the summer series?
I guess so.
Like a committee, a committee of presentation, eh?
Yeah. You should have also another one in your packet for the summer series.
Yes.
I believe it's just slightly different. Normally, there's two separate applications because of the number of dates. And this year, there's only one because they've spent all the dates on one application. It's a very similar setup as we've had the last several years. We've worked with Alex Trevino to make changes to that so it works out best for everyone, including the city, local business owners, and hopefully, the people to show up there.
I noticed that the, they're going to move, move this on to C Street?
Slightly, yeah. There's going to be, so they're going to bring food trucks in. The food trucks are going to serve the patrons of the summer series events, and they're going to be within the fenced area. So, the consumption area is going to include the food trucks. They are going to close off C Street, and they're going to put some tables and things out there that will allow local businesses to be able to have access to that space as well, and be able to get some patronage for the series where people don't have to go inside of it.
Additional questions?
I just, I have one about dates.
Please do.
I see that there are only six dates that we're approving for this. Is there a reason why we're skipping the last weekend in August?
We actually made a decision to give that entire weekend to the community fiesta. Typically, what's happened is the summer series is about Friday, and then Atlanta is coming on Saturday for the community fiesta. It's always been a little bit of a push-pull in, you know, between the two different events, and so we decided to try something new and have her session get both Friday and Saturday nights.
Thank you.
Additional questions? And somebody would like to suggest action? Don't jump at this.
I move to recommend approval of the above temporary sales license application in alcohol consumption within the designated area pending payment of all associated fees.
Motion, second discussion. Everybody good? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you, council. I know that we have to, we do these, and, you know, sometimes it seems kind of rote, but other times, you know, the fact that we take a look at it does make a real difference. Before we go to executive session, are there any council announcements that people would like to make this night? I did that with a smile.
I know you did. I appreciate that.
Any council announcements in general?
May nineteenth is the cleanup day.
Yes.
It is also Discover My Town, which is a chamber event, and this year it is equally being promoted by the Polk County Tourism Alliance under Uncork Polk County. So there are going to be somewhere between twenty and thirty stops on Discover My Town, and the after-party is at Independence Grove.
Additional announcements? Okay. The city council will now meet executive session to consider information or records that are exempt from disclosure pursuant to ORS one nine two six six oh two F. Immediately following, the city council will meet executive session with purpose of consulting with the city's labor negotiator pursuant to ORS one nine two six six oh two D. Representatives of news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. The news media are specifically directed not to report any deliberations during the executive sessions, except to state the general subject of the session's previous council. The decisions will be made in the executive session. It's time the council adjourns to the event center for the duration of the executive session. Once all the executive sessions have adjourned, we return to open session in the council chambers. Any decisions from either executive session will be deliberated at this time. Let's take about five minutes and get to downstairs.